We're going to call this meeting of the Special Ed Alternative Ed and Early College Subcommittee to Order. Can you call it over, please?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Coogan?
Yep.
Mr. Costa?
Here. First, I want to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any media. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Please rise for our fledge of allegiance. [inaudible] To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. There's no objections. We would like to take the agenda out of order to accommodate some of the folks that are here. Anybody here share? Okay, so we're going to start off first with a discussion on the early childhood programming, special education and typical status and needs. All I would ask is that whoever's speaking just introduce yourself, just in case people don't know who you are and for the people, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Loesch.
Good evening, Michael Loesch, Assistant Superintendent of Special Ed. So gentlemen, you have the data that Ms. Carvalho provided to you. Unfortunately, though, she could not be here tonight due to she's on a medical leave and absence, so we can try to answer any questions as best we can. However, Kathy is not available.
You want to talk a little bit about what's here?
I'm happy to jump in right now.
Sure, anybody.
Ian Dargan, Assistant Superintendent to Student Services. Basically, what you have in front of you, not in the binder but in the packet, is really just an overview of all of our pre-K classrooms in the Fall River Public Schools. So really, it just lays out each of the schools as well as what the configuration looks like. We have half-day programs, we have all-day programs, the number of students, the number of teachers who are in our schools, and then ultimately, how many three-year-olds, how many four-year-olds, and certainly in our preschools, we have some five-year-olds whose birth dates are after September 1st, they're not eligible for kindergarten, but yet remain in preschool for an additional year. Looking at breaking up the type, our pre-kindergartens are primarily integrated, which means we have model students in a classroom with special ed children. The regulation is such that we need to have the majority, our regular ed students, but really, majority is 51 percent. So primarily, we have a lot of focus on our special ed students. By regulation, we're obligated to provide those services. Then on the third page of that document, you can see in each of the schools, the start and end times of our preschool. They did not change from last year, they are still the same start and ending times. We have to keep so many slots open and available. We have two-year-olds who may turn three in a month or two, who may, at that point in time, qualify for special education services in our district. And so you can see the total there of integrated slots, as well as how many of our sub-separate slots that are still open at this point in time. We'd love to be able to provide more preschool opportunities for many more of our children in Fall River, but unfortunately, space is an issue right now. We also have a C-FACE grant, it's about $400,000, but it is a Greater Fall River grant, which means we run play and learn groups for those children that don't come to our preschool. We go out to Somerset, we go out to Westport, and we run at least once a month, a couple of hour workshop where students may be introduced with a parent, a book, and then the children go off and do a craft, and then the parents are educated a little bit more on how to work with their children at home. So we provide a little bit of socialization, we provide a little bit of education and counseling for parents too as well. This is information tonight. We'd love to have a conversation further down the road about early childhood education for possibly all three and four-year-olds in the city. Joanne Sprager from the Children's Museum chairs a citywide committee where there's really a big push. Last March, there was an Early Childhood Summit held over at BCC. Next March, there will be the Second Annual Early Childhood Summit, and then you know that last month, there was the showing of No Small Matters to the business community, and that was really to get folks to understand the real importance of catching our kids early on and providing the optimum learning experience. That's pretty much our report on preschool tonight.
Any questions? Mr. Costa?
So you mentioned that you have, so we have 28 slots that are open? That's the third page, it's highlighted, slots needed for EI students, 28?
We would need for our early intervention students that are turning three anywhere between October, because this was generated.
So has that changed? So they can stop being evaluated in what, two years, nine months?
Correct, correct, but we don't enroll them until they're...
You can't enroll until they're three, but you can evaluate them.
Correct, but we know when they're coming to us, too.
So the slots that we're holding, do we have students identified for those already?
Most of the students, yes.
You say most?
So out of 28, we probably know of about 20 of them, because they're already in Head Start or they're already in some other type of care.
So then what do we do with the other eight slots, other than holding them open?
We need to, legally, we need to hold them open in case another student goes through child find. We have a duty and an obligation to go out and seek throughout our city, are there any children who are eligible, who maybe haven't come forward? So we need to keep some of those seats available.
And so that's what we have now currently, 28?
Correct.
Or is that what we had starting, beginning of the school year?
That's what we had in October.
Okay. How many do we have now? If you know.
I don't think, I don't think the data has been updated.
Let me just say this, I'm not trying to put anybody in a spot, I'm just trying to determine. So we'll have students who will fill those slots?
Correct.
Yes.
For the course of the year.
My concern was that we have slots that aren't being used, because we're waiting for students to come in. If we've identified them...
Correct.
I mean, we're waiting for them to turn three, so that we can place them.
Yes.
And they're going to be placed within the school year. I'm okay with that. With such a high need for pre-K slots, my fear in listening, and that's why I asked some questions, is that my hope was that we don't have slots that, at the end of the year, we haven't used all year, because certainly, we have others who I'm sure are on a waitlist, who would certainly, as role model students, be glad to take those spots. So we know who they are, we're holding them open until they turn three, so that we can place them. And you're confident that we'll have all these slots filled at some point throughout this school year?
Based on past experience and known needs of the students. Last year, we actually oversubscribed because of not enough slots being available, and we ended up adding additional pairs to the classroom late spring in order to be able to meet the IEP regulations.
I think that's going to be the same concern moving forward this spring, as been expressed by Kathy and both Kristen Faris, who oversees the early childhood and special education portion, is that especially in our sub-separate classrooms, that we're not going to actually have enough to meet the need for the end of the year.
I mean, I'll almost speak for myself, but I know my colleagues, all proponents of pre-K and expanding it and having additional offerings. Years ago, Mr. Dargan may remember, if not, it may have happened when he was at the State House, but we used to have full day, and we were offered it to less children, because the state reimbursement chapter 70 was half. We decided, rather than have full day, for half the number of students to open it up full day and split it, excuse me, to change it to half-day, so we could offer up the second half of the day to an additional 20-plus students. And so we've expanded it in that manner. Personally, I know space is an issue, but hopefully, we take a look at that, because with the Student Opportunity Act money, it does talk. In the language, the bill, the law, does speak specifically to early childhood education, specifically pre-K. So I'd hate to see the funding now be there, and now just the logistics in terms of space not be available. And if that's the case, if someone can start taking a look at that now, and if that's going to be an issue, I know in years past, we have the partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, we rented some space there. You know, I don't know if that's something the committee would consider, but depending on whether or not we have enough physical space in our own school, I think we need to start looking at what are our options for, if the funding's there, we need to, you know, certainly implement it and find space. So if someone can start looking at that now, so that as the budget starts to come around, if we do have the funding for it, I'd love to see us expand it. Whether we can do full day again, I'm not really sure, and it still may be beneficial to get some of those students half-day rather than not at all. That's just a personal feeling on it, some may argue differently, if there's data that suggests that students should be in there full-time, full-day, which it probably is, but given our circumstances, at least half-day is something, it's better than nothing. It gives them that initial jump start into the school setting, getting acclimated to a classroom, so that when they roll through the door of kindergarten, I don't fear for kindergarten teachers that they don't know how to hold a pencil, or that they're really going down to the real basics when it comes to classroom management, how to simulate, if you will, to a classroom setting, and rules and structure and that thing, and those types of things. So I appreciate the information, certainly is helpful to have. You know, I look forward to the discussion, you know, later date, I guess, if yours, about what our offerings will be in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I am.
Did you have something to say?
I just wanted to say through the chair, as recently as today, Ken Pacheco is looking into what some potential space options will be, so I can assure you, that obstacle list pleased is being looked at.
Thank you.
How many kindergarten children in your district?
I'm not 100 percent certain right now.
And our plan is that all children that hit the age are going to be in pre-K next year, we hope?
That's...
To borrow in space?
That's the goal citywide. It doesn't necessarily mean all of them would come to the Fall River Public Schools, but that there were enough opportunities through Head Start, private daycare, that all children who want the exposure to a preschool will be able to have that exposure. That's the goal.
Because I got that message today, I had a meeting, believe it or not, with the governor, and with those additional funds, he was pushing pre-K right at the table, and every other representative was, too. So I know that we got to elevate that mission...
Yes.
...to make sure we get that done as quickly as possible, for all students, whether they go to any school, it's fine, they can go to St. Stan's, wherever they are, it's fine with us. Okay. And the other thing is, how are kids identified at three years old that they need services? Where does that come from?
It's usually coming from the Head Starts and daycare programs, they're getting the information, sometimes they're making the referral over, or they're going to the parent, expressing the concerns to the parent, and then the parent is requesting evaluation through the district. And that's all part of our child find process, that we go out and also kind of collect information from them, from the teachers, to kind of get what are the areas of concern, to determine whether we're going to do some screeners, or we're going to actually proceed and evaluate to provide services for the student.
So the 61 that are here, listed, total sub-separate, those came in already identified, or did you pull them out of other classes and say, this young man or this young lady needs some additional support?
Yeah, we would have pulled them out of other places, gotten the referrals in, and then done our own evaluations, and then determined the level of need and support.
Thanks, sir.
Through the chair, in the springtime, again, as part of the child find process, we will reach out to local daycares, pediatricians make the referral to. If a speech therapist or an occupational therapist is already providing early intervention, they will let the parent know that the child now is eligible, too, as well. But we do our own screening then in-house, so we go out and say to parents, if you have any concerns at all, these are the dates that we're going to be doing the evaluations, let us know, and we'll evaluate your child, too.
I had a question on the, it says the 28 integrated slots and 14 sub-separate slots are open. Is that what you were saying, they're not going to be filled, or they're going to be filled?
No, they're going to be filled, and there's a concern that that actually won't meet the level of need, that we might actually potentially need more beyond in the sub-separate. Much like we noted at, I think, one of the previous school committee meeting, we're getting a heavy influx of students with high medical needs, who need that sub-separate environment, not only for instruction, but for really safety reasons as well.
I would just ask whoever is taking this information back, that someone go through this, and the information's good, but it's confusing. If we could get this on a one-page or to all of the committee members, so that everyone can sort of digest what we've talked about and what the needs are in paragraph form, I think might make a little more sense than some of these numbers, because I'm still a little bit confused. The piece of the schools and doing some space and all that, I think we need to, we need to put some deadlines in place for when that, some sort of report is going to come to the committee, because we're going to be doing the budget, we're trying to figure it out, and I, for one, have been hearing about space needs and all this for over a year, and we seem to be not getting anywhere with that. So I understand Mr. Coogan's probably looking at it, but we just keep on, you might be doing work that we don't know about, but ultimately, I think it's pretty much time that we need to get a report from superintendent's office, or whoever he delegates, to the committee about what are we doing for space across the district. So if somebody can just take that back to him, I would appreciate it. My last question is, what Mr. Coogan said about the pre-K for all students, I missed something there. Who mentioned that that was the case? Is that what?
That's the goal of this committee in Fall River, which is made up of the Chamber for Education, Joanne Sprager, the combined joint efforts between New Bedford and Fall River. It's a goal that the city has, but it's also a governor's initiative to have pre-K for all four-year-olds.
So he also asked the data. So if that's the goal, shouldn't we have a number? So if we said that's the goal, wouldn't it therefore imply that somebody's already looked at? In the current year, we have 900 kids that are kindergarten-aged, 100 of them go to this place, 100, would that theoretically, shouldn't that exist already?
Sure. So typically, when a budget is built, you usually call for the census, and the census will tell you how many one-year-olds, two-year-olds, three-year-olds you have in the city, and that's then how you would start forecasting your budget. I also, back to the facilities piece of it, know that come the first of the year, MSBA will be soliciting some of their projects then, too, as well. So whether it's an accelerated repair project, or whether it's a new building project, there's that funding opportunity, too, as well. So I think we'll be talking more about this, either through the facilities subcommittee, or as well as through budget planning, too, as well. It is one of our goals for the next school year, as we build our budget, too, moving forwards. But we just really wanted to highlight to you what our current programs exist, and that we have a need and a belief for universal pre-kindergarten for four-year-olds.
Maybe if you could get, I know you said that you looked at it, or whoever looked at the forecasting, we don't see any of that. So it would be helpful, everything I've seen here today is what's mandated by law. This isn't optional.
Correct.
So we got a presentation on what's optional. When we look at expanding pre-K, this isn't what we're talking about. We're talking about the other side of, the other students that are not necessarily mandated. Because this, we don't have a choice. So how do we, as a committee, put that in perspective of how many kids, does that look like? What is it, you know, that's the type of information I think that we need to make it a priority, and I think it is a priority, but... And that is a fire alarm, so we're going to have to take a recess. We're going to call the meeting back to order, and on the last bit, we're going to call upon the superintendent for a few words.
So in terms of early childhood, there's a couple ideas that I have that I'd be putting in next year's budget proposal to bring forward to the committee for deliberation. I'll give you an example, one of which is, right now, we have these half-day programs at a couple of our schools. If we turn those into full-day programs, like we have at Fonsica and Doran, we would expand our capacity of full-day services. Granted, the number of kids would be about the same, maybe slightly less, so in terms of state reimbursement, it's probably a break even, because I could also create another class or two at Henry Lord, that's probably where I'm going to add some more space, because our goal all along is to create more full-day programming for four-year-olds. And I think that that's what the current push with the chamber and a whole bunch of other folks to really think about how we can do this. So that's one option for us, to really think about, what could we do in one year to expand and deepen core program? Granted, it would have to be a lottery system for all non-special ed kids, because we wouldn't have enough seats, so that's something to consider. But true, again, as I said, if I'm able to move out a couple classrooms at Henry Lord that's currently being used as storage, I could probably have the same amount of capacity. We could budget the additional teachers and parents. What do we do, a two-to-one, a one-to-two ratio? Yeah. And if we did something like that, again, it would be part of the larger budget proposal, rounder strategy of opening seats.
Mr. Costa?
Just a thought that I had, Doc Dargan had mentioned that Joanne Sprager is part of the group that's spearheading early childhood education, pre-education in the city. It's an opportunity to sit and speak with her about the possibility of using some of the space at the Children's Museum for classroom space down here during the day. It's got plenty of parking, it's accessible, it's in the north end. I just, you know, I know we've had partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club, paid a rental fee, you know, I'm just thinking that, in order to truly expand early childhood education in the city, we're not going to be able to do it under the roofs that we have now, just space is limited. And so I think a conversation with her about, it's probably a win-win, to get that foot traffic through the Children's Museum, probably space in there that could be designed or set up for classrooms during the day, whether it's halftime or full-time, maybe something that she's amenable to as a former educator, you know, particularly the early grades, I know Joanne's work, I think, I believe it was in preschool, or young, early education. So, you know, those are the kinds of things I think we need to start looking at. If we can't do it under our own roofs, you know, look for partnerships within the city, where we may have some availability there, she may be amenable to doing that, and it may be something that's cost-effective, long-term, I'm sure would benefit her and the museum as well, to have the doors open during the day, plenty of parking, I think there's an opportunity for area outside, for some outside activity. So I just, I put that on the table just for discussion down the road, but I think we should look at all avenues.
So she's on the planning committee with us, she's a core partner. The chamber's been hosting meetings every other week as we think about rolling out. We have, we have that as a potential opportunity, and we also have, the Boys and Girls Club has a couple of classrooms in the basement, is potential opportunities, and we still talk to the why about that. So everything's on the table, I think we're all on the same page in terms of, let's try to grow, let's try to grow as much as we can each year, as long as we can, we have the human capacity to do it.
No, you, I'm sorry.
No, no, I am.
Oh, you're good. I heard, I heard a lot stronger this afternoon about pre-K for all kids, so I don't think it's cutting into a half-day or a full-day and moving some kids around is going to cut it.
It's a, it's a work in progress. We won't have the capacity to do all the kids that we have.
Well, we asked earlier, how many kindergarten kids do we have?
It's about 930.
I was guessing 800 plus.
Yeah, it's higher. It fluctuates. We had 930 last year, maybe this year, it's like, I got more kids than we had last year, so I think it's actually higher. So it's about 900 or something kids.
I will have to, we'll have to look for some.
So I think we definitely got everything, the good news is, we're all talking about it.
Okay.
I think we're all on the same page. We're just going to bring something forward.
If I can, I just, you know, we would always, you know, attempt to pull it off, but, you know, the resources in terms of finances, we're always, we're always up against it. Seems now that road has been paved, the bill's signed, it's enacted, and so now, I think, we're past that. Now, I think, we need to get in gear in terms of what the plan's going to be going forward, so then when it comes time to make the plan, put the plan in place, to be considered, that we have this taken care of, and that's going to come quick. And after the new year, I'm sure not only are we going to stop planning our budget, but as you know, state's going to be putting their budget together, and there are going to be other districts like Fall River that are going to be, you know, jockeying for those funds. So, you know, I think we have the right people looking at it, the group here within the city, through the chamber and other organizations, but whether it's the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, the Children's Museum, our own capacity within the schools, I think we have the opportunity to say to the public that we're going to expand pre-K services in the city of Fall River, buy X amount of seats, it'll be done through a lottery system, and start there. And then with that, hopefully with that success and that progress, we can start to look within our own buildings, and maybe we'll have a bubble one year where our K-classes, our one-classes, we can comply with K-1 and have some more space within our schools. But for starters, I'd love to be able to roll out for next budget, you know, X amount of seats have been defined as we're going to expand, and truly expand, not just jockeying with full-day, half-day, to say, well, we're offering more or...
May I suggest to the subcommittee, to be able to come back at the end of January with a proposal of where we are before our rollout, because the budget I'll present in February. So if we get to this committee in January with a much more solid rollout of where we are, short-term and long-term, and give you guys a real, no-nonsense assessment of what we can actually accomplish in one year, I think that timeline would work well for everybody.
Yeah, we mentioned that earlier before you came, that we would want to get some real info back on the numbers that Mr. Coogan talked about, how many are they, where are they? My feeling is, I think it's great the chamber's involved, I think it's great the other groups are involved, but ultimately, the school committee's going to have to make that decision. And a lot of times, it's, oh, well, this one's studying it, that group's studying it, well, really, it should be us.
Yep.
It should be you, it should be our people, it should be us, and we can just, instead of keep talking about it, I think we just have to do it. And now that we're going to have the resources, as Mr. Costa said, now's the time. There's plenty of buildings, there's schools that are closed, there's other things we can do. I'd rather go big and bold than just piecemeal, is my take. So I think we're on this interview.
Gets us excited when you talk like that.
Any other questions, comments on that? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move on with the, back to the agenda, so the RPA data, this was a continuation of the meeting a month ago, so turn it over to Mr. Correa. And just for the public certification, we did have a meeting where we brought up some of the information, the committee had other questions, so Mr. Correa's going to make a presentation, and then we'll, do you need any more?
No, as long as you can see the script, that was where, well, my name is Rob Correa, the principal of the Resilience and Preparatory Academy. We were asked to bring to the school committee some information about RPA, what we're doing there right now, and right now, overview of pathways to success at RPA. We have current structures and pathways that are in RPA, showcase student outcome data, and we're going to go through an overview of pathways and vision for the future for You do have the slides in the booklet and the data right behind it, all tabbed for you. So the vision and mission of RPA, the RPA is going to be support, student center of learning. We want to create an environment so the students feel that they're in charge of their own educational pathway. And we want to do that, what we want to do is use multiple educational options within those pathways, so that they become successful. As educators, we collaborate to research from multiple avenues to better serve our students. Family and community engagement is important for that to happen. We also have to look at rigorous instruction, engaging content, and curriculum. Right now, the curriculum that we're using is stretching our students, but not far enough to meet the district's needs and their needs, and their needs are very important to this whole process. Multiple interventions and supports are available for our students. We have some new innovative happenings with the support, such as, I'm sorry, it just went blank, advisors, the advisory that we just placed in there, along with our student adjustment counselors and our behavior therapists. We also introduced flexible scheduling. That allows us, the ability, the flexible scheduling in the high school allows us to meet the students' needs, what they're doing in their life, and how we can, how we can actually combine their life with school life, so that it's a win-win situation, rather than it all being one way. And of course, we want to have them experience, real-world experiences, including internships, experiences leading to industry certifications. Not only do we want them to meet or introduce a real-world experience, they do have real-world experiences, and we want to expand on that, okay? It's not that we're introducing new concepts, they come in with some real-world experiences that we should be aware of, and we need to make sure that we meet those needs as well. We keep talking about Resilience and Preparatory Academy being the umbrella, the hub of all what's happening. what's happening in that building. So we have a diagram here that shows we have a school between grades seven and twelve, and we have the rising seventh graders. The rising seventh graders are those overage, undercredit, overage, undercredited sixth graders that need to be bubbled up as well, so we want to make sure that we meet their needs. So we have two main cohorts, and if we take a look at pathways just in general, the middle school consists of traditional year classes, face-to-face classes with teachers. We have online courses to help those students bubble up to the next middle grade, so they're not waiting a full year to see the light at the end of the tunnel. One thing that we don't want to do is, we don't want to discourage any student from being successful, so we also want to make sure that they see that there's an outcome, a real outcome for them, so they can be successful. We also have forty-five-day retention back to the sending school. If they meet the criteria of improving grades, if they meet improving their conduct and attending school on a regular basis, they have the opportunity to go back to the sending school, which some students really want to do that. And then we have competency-based testing in the middle school also. So this way here, if a student has repeated a grade and they haven't shown progress because of attendance, usually that's the number-one issue, that they weren't there long enough to get a passing grade because of their attendance. We don't have that attendance policy, so we try to do a competency-based test with that student, and if they get a seventy or better in that subject, they are moved to the next grade level in that subject. They don't move from seventh to eighth grade fully, they just move in that subject area. So again, they see the light at the end of the tunnel. We have the same thing for the high school as well, but again, on a much bigger scale. The traditional classes that we have, usually for the self-contained classes, they need a little bit more care, they need a little more support, and we want to make sure that they're successful as well. We have online competency-based classes and testing for high school students. Again, if they're overage, undercredited, we want to make sure that they can bubble up to their grade level in a manner that's comfortable for them without waiting for the full year. Flexible scheduling, again, we take a look at the students, what's going on with the student, the student's working, trying to hold down a job, I shouldn't say full-time, but if they're working during the day, we try to flex their hours so that we can meet them working that part-time job during the day, so they don't have to give that up. They can come in later during the day and stay until five o'clock. If they have a job in the afternoon and they can flex their ability to go online or face-to-face class, we try to do that in the morning and give them the afternoon to go on with their life. Again, we're trying to meet the students' need. We're trying to be more student-friendly, if you will, as opposed to having them fit into our mold, we're trying to create a new mold for them. We have twelve credit recovery courses. This is following the AVE educational outline for adult learners. They go, they go through a twelve-week course. Usually, these courses are for students that have repeated the grades continuously and have not met success. They did get some information along the way. Why keep them into a class a full-year long when they can condense it down to twelve weeks and still maintain the integrity of the class and of their education as well? And we have the Evolve program, our pathway, which has, the students can opt into that pathway, okay? It's student choice, and that pathway is all, it's an online blended course where it's student-centered and project-centered. The overall configuration of RPA, we have all our students on three main floors. The first floor is the Evolve pathway. That pathway is, again, separated from the rest of the school, because it's a pilot, and we want to make sure that we can gather the data we need to make sure it's being successful. On the, on the third floor, we house grades ten through twelve, and on the fourth floor, we have the rising seventh through ninth graders. The ninth grade of the middle school classes are divided into five separate levels, and we find out where they belong by competency-based testing in English and math. So this way here, we're optimizing their learning experience. RPA academy configuration, RPA synthesis, I went through this again, it's a lot of repeat repeat. I'm just going to just highlight some of the things that we do on the lower cohort. Attendance is, is an issue throughout the school, so we want to make sure that we focus in on attendance. We have behavioral concerns, we have, and our students have severe academic gaps in their learning, most of them are transitional students. They're often, we offer, yeah, often accompanied by LIPs, IEPs, or 504 combination requirements. Most of the lower cohort, the middle school cohort, take truly, fully, full-year courses for most of them because of this. There are one hundred and sixty-five students enrolled in the upper cohort, that cohort is ten through twelve, and that consists of three main cohorts that, again, we look at what the students need, and then we place that student in that pathway so that they can meet success. If the student is, is trying to gain their diploma and accelerate, accelerate a rate due to family issues, they're needed. What we do is we do blended classrooms, they'll take some online classes, and they'll take some twelve-week course classes. Again, we try to fit their needs. The twelve-week trimester schedule, however, for the upper course, of the upper level, is basically individualized pacing for online. They do it at their own rate of speed. This way here, they can meet their success without being pushed. There is a time, there is a timeline for online learning. We try to give them a twelve-week window, but if some students need more than twelve weeks, we extend that to thirteen, fourteen weeks. If they need less than that, we, we put them, we put more courses into their schedule so they can meet their requirements.
Can I just ask that we move more quickly to the data? Just because that was what was brought up at the last meeting, which was a confusion on the data.
Okay.
I know we just had a fire drill, so like, we should move it along, but the, not to dismiss some of the stuff, there's a lot of good information here, so I'd ask my colleagues to check that out, but this is where the continuation was from, so sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. So enrollment for 2019 is two hundred and fifty-three. Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty right now is two hundred and fifty-three students. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was one hundred and ninety-one students. Twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen was one hundred and eighty-seven students. Attendance is usually flat, we're trying to improve that. We hit the seventy-four to seventy-two percent yearly for the past two years. Right now, we're at seventy-two percent, seventy, seventy-five percent, I'm sorry, seventy-five percent for the short period of time between September and December. So we have improved it a little bit, but again, it's a work in progress, we have a long time to go before the end of the year. Number of students that graduated last year was ninety-four. Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen was ninety-four. Twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen was eighty-six. So we've had a graduation growth rate over the past three years. Special education, however, we've increased special education over the three years. In twenty seventeen, we had fifty-five students, that was thirty percent. Twenty eighteen, we had twenty-nine percent, which was fifty-five of the population. And this year, we have eighty-one, which is thirty-two, eighty-one students, which is thirty-two percent of our population, which is special education students. For English language learners, we've increased almost double every single year. We started out nine with nine. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we have eighteen. This year, we have thirty-five. So we've doubled that population every single year. And graph, we have a graph that indicates the growth. For conduct data, this was the confusion last, last time we fit together, so I hope this clarifies it. We have two, two charts here. This first chart is between September and December, okay? I wanted to give a comparison in that timeframe throughout three years. So the first chart, right now, between September and December, we have five hundred and fifty-seven conduct referrals. However, in two thousand and eighteen, at the same timeframe, we had seven hundred and eighty-five. And in twenty seventeen, we had nine, nine hundred and nineteen. Out of that, I believe the question was last time we, we met, how many students were actually suspended out of the population? So one or more students for twenty nineteen, this year we have a hundred and twenty students that have one or more conduct referrals, okay? In twenty eighteen, out of the seven hundred and eighty-five, we had one hundred and thirty with one or more. And on twenty seventeen, we had one hundred and sixty-nine students. We have a breakdown of conduct administration of what happens throughout the conduct referral process, but I'd like to skip down to the out-of-school suspensions right now, okay? So the one through five out-of-school suspensions, in twenty seventeen, we had one hundred and twelve. In twenty eighteen, we had one hundred and fifty-six. And this year, times, in the same timeframe, we have ninety-eight. So it shows that we're, we're trying to reduce the suspension rate. We're doing something different this year than we did last year and the year prior, and that's the restored justice and redirection. We have thirty-nine this year of students that went through restored justice.
What about, it's transferred OSS?
Transferred OSS is the number of, of in-school, out-of-school suspension, I'm sorry, out-of-school suspensions from students being transferred to RPA from other schools.
So they carry the.
So they carry the carries.
So it is the ninety-eight?
So they're part of the ninety-eight, yes.
So a lot of this conduct data that you see, the students actually receive that referral at their sending school, and it carries with them once they get done.
If you, if you take a look at, what we carried, carried over in twenty eighteen was forty-four, and in twenty seventeen, we carried over eighty-one. So that's part of that total one thousand five hundred and ninety-three and two thousand one hundred and seventy-four. Again, we're shooting to be a lot lower this year. So enrollment, enrollment has increased from one hundred and eighty-one students to two hundred and fifty-three, that's, that's an increase of forty percent over this timeframe, okay? Conduct incidents has reduced significantly from nineteen to twenty on an average. And again, if you use straight math, that's two-point-two conduct preferences per student. But as you see, not every student gets contact.
I think one of the things that is very interesting about the data right here is that even though RPA has been steadily increasing in its enrollment, the, the conduct incidences is actually going down. So you'd expect that you have more students in a school in an alternative setting, your incidences would go up just by having more students. But what we found in the data actually is that it's going down, so we wanted to highlight some of the practices that Rob and his team have been employing to create a safer and more secure environment at RPA.
Some of the decline has been attributed to restored practices that we've been introducing as we go on, and we, we just incorporated the advisory, daily advisory, which is twenty minutes, where eight to nine students meet with their advisor on a daily basis, and they, they talk about creating a supportive culture, identifying positive behavior, and identifying career goals, education and career goals. As you can see by the chart, the lower cohort, the lower cohort seems to be the majority of behavioral problems, and that's grade seven is twenty-seven percent, grade eight is forty percent, and then starts reducing as soon as it, it goes into grade nine, it goes down to nineteen percent. I believe that's because they've, they've already adjusted to the culture of the school. What we're trying to do in grade seven and eight is correct unwanted behaviors. When they come to the school, they're carrying over all those behavior patterns that were traditionally not looked at, and we try to address it, not in a confrontational manner, not in a diminutive fashion, but we try to look at it as, what can we do to improve your behavior? How can we help you? Some promising results, I was amazed at this, we, we hear a lot about RPA students not being able to meet the mark because they have educational gaps. I believe that, that changes over time, and we're at that time again where there's change. And this testing has proved us a little bit, where we take a look at the math test, the ANET math test that's being given out by the district to see where, where the student's ability is, and we highlighted Algebra I. Algebra I is the number-one biggest predictor of high school graduation, and we have thirty-two percent while the district has twenty-four percent. We outbeat the district.
Ask him to explain that. Explain that in mathematical terms.
Yeah, so success, successful completion of Algebra I, especially on-time, is a big predictor on time high school graduation. And for RPA students, taking algebra to score higher than the district average means that there's rigorous instruction going on, the students, you know, are involved in the gates and memory in that class. So it's, I think it's a good highlight, a good, something to strengthen as we go forward. But we wanted to highlight it because of the importance of Algebra I, that the data says overall success.
Who says that?
National Research.
Maybe get us excited, just curious.
Sure, yeah.
Isn't it interesting? Whatever, it isn't this curious more so than anything else, I guess, I just put that.
So our math gap, as, although it's, there's a gap, it's not that bad of a gap, it's a small gap, and I think we've worked on that to improve it. However, we need a lot of work in our English language area, okay? It looks like we, we met the district with English III, which is good in itself, however, we, we still need to work in English II, English I, and our, our target area is the eighth-grade English, where we only hit twelve percent and the district had forty-three percent. We have a lot of work to do in the eighth-grade area. Attendance has slightly improved over the past three years. In two thousand, sorry, in two thousand and seventeen, we're at seventy percent, I said that earlier, we went to seventy-one percent in twenty eighteen, and this year, we're at seventy-five percent. We see a nice upswing, and we, we hope to keep that going as well.
So you're averaging about seventy-five right now?
Right now.
As you see on the upper right graph is the breakdown between Evolve, the upper cohort ten to twelve, and the lower cohort seven, seven, nine.
At this time, we'll take a look at, we're seeing that Evolve has reduced conduct referrals dramatically with their twenty-seven students. They're down to three recipients, where before, those students that are, are involved right now had a hundred and forty-two. So again, we see a dramatic change in, in conduct and days suspended. Last, those students that are in the, in the Evolve, had twenty-seven days suspended last year, they have no suspensions right now at this time. Same with.
So it's just an interesting way to see the same kids compared last year versus this year, instead of comparing the, you know, Evolve students to students not involved, we wanted to just, you evolve students before they got to Evolve, evolve students since entering Evolve.
I'm going to think that one specifically, that slide there would need some more explanation in my opinion. There's a lot more that goes into where those kids came, which you talked about last time.
Where?
How did they get assigned there? What was, you know, there's more to that story than just they went from a lot to zero, in my opinion. So that might be worth, as we go forward, getting further information, like, for instance, are the kids just doing some of the same things and not getting that referral for it? That they would have things like that. I just, with charts I see that go from up to zero, I always feel like there's something else going on.
Again, this is pulling early right now, it's a little bit short.
Yeah, that's fine, I'm just not looking for any, but as we go forward in the future.
So moving forward, looking at the.
So, moving forward, um, looking at the preliminary successes with the Evolve pathway, Dr. Malone asked us to start looking at RPA redesign two thousand and twenty. So, we're starting to explore additional opportunities for our students moving forward. Mr. Eggy, I can assure you that we're doing a root cause analysis, and while we're not yet ready to share this, we're looking at every student at RPA and when, at what grade they entered our school system, and what the learning profile of the student looks like. So, we're looking at that very carefully. In your packet, you also have a one-pager. Uh, School in Maine is offering us some support. We're developing, as we said, the data dashboard, as well as exploring now opportunities for additional pathways that will come before this committee, um, in the near future, in the new year. We also, um, are looking at strategic planning and a redesign committee. So, early January, we will be working with the staff at RPA to consider additional pathways. I'm gonna turn it over to Drew so he can explain now the graph that's shown on the screen, um, and where we hope to be able to, um, help our kids be additionally successful.
Dr. Dargun, one thing, does anyone have any questions, Bob? They will, but I'd rather you just keep going and move and ask the question.
Since we, uh, met last time, um, Dr. Dargun, myself, Dr. Malone, Principal Gray and his team, uh, have been based in some initial discussions about RPA redesign for two thousand and twenty. And we've done some initial research, um, and, and talked to, um, our, our partners at School in Maine and people incorporated. And that center part of, of, of the graphic that you see is really a centralized, comprehensive intake program that we wanna strengthen. We do have an intake orientation currently at RPA, but we feel that, uh, we need to expand it, uh, make it longer in length, uh, really get to, uh, students' individual, uh, academic goals and career plans, and, uh, help them understand which pathway is best for them at RPA. Cause one of the overall overarching themes that we're learning about is that, uh, students are telling us that they do better when they have voice, when they have choice, when they're learning is personalized. So, we really wanna create additional pathways and strengthen the ones that we already have, uh, to give students more options. And some of the, the pathways, um, that you see around the rings, um, are just some initial discussions, uh, kind of themed pathways that we wanna explore with, uh, the steering committee, uh, and the various stakeholders to really come up, uh, with a detailed plan as we move towards the spring. So, some of, some of the, the pathways and the programs that already exist, Evolve, we've talked about before, uh, a second piece that we really wanna strengthen is CTE and work-based pathways. We have some initial programs with people incorporated, leading to a CNA certification. But we wanna add some chapter seventy-four CTE programming, uh, and this new program from the state that's called After Dark, where we'd be able to potentially utilize space, uh, at Durfee, Universal Community College, uh, after the Durfee day ends, three thirty and the, um, the lives go dark, so that we give students real-world experience, hands-on learning, uh, in the area of interest. Uh, we've had some initial discussions about cosmetology and culinary arts, uh, because those are the highest demand, um, uh, CTE pathways currently at Durfee, and this would expand, uh, access to students at RPA. Uh, another potential pathway to expand, uh, is the transitional, uh, students that need emotional support, uh, one group of students, uh, that needs some individualized, uh, support is, uh, students who might be core involved, students who might have a significant, significant emotional issue going on, and we need to, uh, personalize, uh, their education for them, so that not any of that would have been there needs. Credit recovery is something that, uh, RPA has, has done for many years, especially with the, uh, the transfer into the trimester system, lending that face-to-face and online, um, credit recovery option to meet the students' education needs. And we also talked, uh, about expanding an afternoon plus evening academy, there's a three to five program currently at RPA, but how could we do more comprehensive, serve more needs, allow students to work during the day, uh, especially, uh, our over-aging English learners, um, to give them an opportunity to earn, uh, their high school diploma and gain valuable skills. So, um, we developed a steering committee, uh, the steering committee is really gonna guide and, uh, the implementation of, of the overall two thousand and twenty RPA efforts. Uh, we're hoping to have a diverse membership, uh, just recently, you know, come together. We'd love to have school committee membership on the committee, we'd love to have union memberships, uh, we want, um, a diverse representation of educators, administration at RPA, and also at the central administration to help, uh, steer, uh, what the work is gonna probably look like. So, our initial next steps, um, we're gonna have a faculty meeting at RPA on January eighth, and we're gonna kind of overview the redesigned two thousand and twenty kind of timeline, talk and engage the faculty, what are their high priority needs, what are some of the challenges that they're seeing, uh, and kind of talk about some of the subcommittees, uh, that will be taken shape to help, uh, do the work in the detail of what next school year might look like. At a faculty meeting on January twenty-second, about two weeks later, um, for the, the educators and administrators into sub, into the subcommittee, subcommittees that they select, kind of talk about some norms and some group expectations, preview, uh, the January thirty-first, which is, which is our PD day. And, uh, on, on, on the PD day itself, uh, we're gonna be doing, we're gonna roll up our sleeves and start the, the work with the subcommittees, uh, benchmarking out some objectives and characteristics in the year.
Surveys for students, surveys for faculty, surveys for parents, what are they interested in too as well?
All right, thank you, Carolyn. If you wanted to just have a seat, maybe you might have a few questions. Mr. Costa?
So, firstly, start off by saying thank you for the presentation. Certainly, a lot of clarity given, some of the questions we had, the last subcommittee meeting regarding the data that was shared. I made a note for myself in one place, I just needed some clarification on, so, on the conduct data, for two thousand and nineteen, you said you had ninety-eight total out-of-school suspensions from one to five days?
That's correct.
And in two thousand and eighteen, you had one hundred and fifty-six?
That's correct.
How many did you have in two thousand and eighteen for six to ten?
That data, that data was combined, so that one fifty-six, so...
So, that's total?
That's total.
So, that could include, um, restored, well, you didn't have the redirect or the restored, restorative justice in action, did you, last year?
That's correct. No.
Okay, so that's just a combination of out-of-school one to five days and out-of-school six to ten?
Correct.
And let me ask you this, so, that one fifty-six in two thousand and eighteen, does that include transferred out-of-school students that came in, or those just infractions that occurred in two thousand and eighteen at RPA?
Those are combined. Those are combined infractions, yeah.
Well, so what I guess I'm getting at, I just wanna need some clarity before I tried to make the point. So, if you add the ninety-eight this year, the three from, uh, out-of-school from six to ten, the thirty-nine redirect or restorative, I come up with about a hundred and thirty. So, is it safe to say there's about twenty-six, there's a gap between last year and this year, about twenty-six?
That's correct.
Okay. So, that makes a little more sense to me when I'm looking at it, you know? First of all, congratulations, a year to date, you're doing better than you were last year, so that's good. Any progress, whether it's a few or, or it's, you know, twenty, thirty is, is, is progress, nonetheless. But when you add those up, that closes that gap a little bit. When I looked at a hundred fifty-six and ninety-eight, I said, wow, what's going on there? If you had told me that one fifty-six didn't include six to ten or transfers or redirections, and it may not, cause like you said, restorative justice, you weren't using, so that thirty-nine, I guess you could, you know, take that out, you're about a hundred and one conduct, I guess, um, you know, consequences, uh, with either out-of-school suspension from one to five days, six to ten, or students who came in and transferred. But needless to say, I understand the numbers a little better with that explanation, but, you know, that's good work. You know, regardless, like I mentioned, whether it's a small number or a large number, we're making progress. Um, I'd like to see what those numbers will be at the end of the year, and see if they stay on that trajectory, or do we sort of flatline and end up kind of where we were last year? But to date, or year to date, the numbers are, you know, certainly promising. And so, in two thousand and eighteen, if I'm following this correctly, and I'm only asking the question so I understand the, the information before me, so two hundred and eighty versus the one fifty-six, that was a full year on the right graph.
Correct.
Year to date on the, the graph on the left. So, that's where we ended up, zero to five, we had two hundred and eighty total in, in last year. So, um, I think we're on good pace hopefully to continue that trend. Um, I wish you the best when it comes to, to that. I mean, the reality is you're dealing with some of the, the most, um, difficult students in terms of behavior and conduct, and that's why they're in that setting primarily, not, not necessarily the only reason, but...
Right.
So, the fact that you're able to make some headway with that, and then I couple that with the Algebra data that I see here, you know, good job. Not only reducing the number of conducts, conduct referrals or, or, uh, consequences for conduct, you're certainly, uh, making some headway with the Algebra One. And I guess the last question I have, what would you say attributed to the Algebra One data that we see here, thirty-two percent as opposed to the district of twenty-four? What changed? I mean, I heard, I think in the explanation, it's a testament or, or example of rigorous instruction, but what does that mean? What, what is rigorous instruction in terms of, you know, the average person is looking at that? Was there a particular strategy, strategy that was employed, or was there additional support being given, or like what attributed to every other year, the percentages we had in, in this year having such an increase?
I would say that the, the teachers' approach, looked at the MCAS, did a lot of MCAS prep work, which really involved a lot of Algebra One, okay? Strategies, the way they approached the students, uh, changed tremendously. We had a different mindset from the teaching point of view. So, that became, the, the students became more engaged, they became more focused.
Same teacher or different teacher?
Different teacher.
Different teacher?
Different teacher.
More highly qualified?
Yes.
So, so someone who had a mastery of the content, as opposed to maybe last year where someone was delivering the material, may not have had the same, you know, grasp on, on content.
Just didn't have the same effect.
I mean, I, I mean, obviously, we strive to have teachers before students and have mastery and have, you know, good abilities, and, and I'm not flooring or faulting the teacher who was there prior. I'm just saying that, you know, there's an indication of, you know, making sure that we do good professional development with our teachers, making sure that we're screening, doing good screening and hiring, so that we can match up teachers that have those skillsets necessary to advance our students. Anything else attributed to it, or?
I would just say that...
Same students? Same students?
Same, same student cycle through, yes.
Okay. So, I'm just looking for variables, like, I mean, it's interesting stuff, and I wanna capitalize on it, I wanna replicate it because it's working. And so, I'm looking for tangibles, how does that happen? And if it's instruction, you know, let's keep that instruction rolling. If, if it's, they were looking at more data for previous exams or, or doing a deeper dive into, into the, the data and targeting the focus of the curriculum on areas that were in need, I'm hoping that's what happened, I'm, I'm just a lay guy. I, I, when it comes to education, you all can speak to that, I'm just looking at it from an outsider's perspective with some experience, saying, I'm hoping that's what this was a result of. Um, and if it is, keep it up, if it's not, then we can have another meeting to get into how that happened.
I, I, I just wanna reinforce, um, that focus work, and particularly with the teacher who's been also identified to sort of lead the math, and quite frankly, the math in, in science, the reach.
Correct.
Sort of putting somebody in a position to, um, right now, um, it's really through, it's, I mean, he's volunteering his time and services around, um, assuming leadership for mathematics in that building. He participates in the network, um, of math leaders in the secondary schools, so he sits regularly with the middle school and the other, the high school department chair, the opportunity to kind of invest in that professional development and then go back and bring it back in the context of RPA, I think is very, is powerful, and it's a testimony to that effort. Um, it opens up the academic leadership in RPA across a larger team, and allowing somebody with that expertise to, to, to deliver both. He delivers in the classroom as well, but there's that, that additional...
Outstanding. So, I, I would say this...
That's been, that's been good.
I won't speak for my colleagues, I'll speak for me, but I, I think they'll share that same sentiment, take back to this individual my, my thanks, cause it's working, and if, if you sent this person, someone who stepped up in that role, not necessarily compensated, but taking on a leadership role, doing deeper dives, taking, you know, extra PD and bringing it back and implementing it, it's working. And so, if we have it already, you know, let's acknowledge that good work, cause I think sometimes we get caught up in the numbers and what's not working, we try to fix what's not working, but we overlook the things that are working. And so, some of that just needs to be a simple, you know, thank you, and so, get that right.
Just to follow up on that, the, um, that testing's gonna be done quarterly, is that?
It's three times, the ANET testing will be done three times. So, we're, um, they actually just finished, or they're in the process of finishing the A two math assessment. When we come back from break, we will do the data analysis, and we'll have A two data to share with you on mathematics. The ELA will follow, and we'll have A two data on ELA as well.
Yeah, I would just ask that, will you follow up with the committee, because I don't like to make a big deal out of numbers, you know?
Yep.
Cause it can change...
Of course.
Real quickly, a lot of variables, so...
Yes, it can.
If you can just shoot us a, I'm sure you'll send it to us, but the only good comment that I would say is that, like Mr. Costa said, you're working with some of the most difficult students in the system, your, the work that's done at RPA benefits all the other schools, and I think we need to do more of that, the good things that are happening. So, in my mind, a great presentation, you got a lot of data and information that we could look at again, um, I would say just keep up the good work and keep on letting us know what's happening, we're here to help you. I think last time we talked about if you're fully staffed, and you said, yes.
We are fully staffed.
You know, we wanna make sure that the district, uh, keeps that, I'm sure we will, if you have vacancies and all, and the like, but keep up the good work as far as I'm concerned. And, um, Mr. Superintendent, you wanna say something?
May I ask?
Sure.
The committee one, um, can the committee accept a report that I can include it for the whole school committee, uh, in the Friday email?
Absolutely.
The second thing I wanted to put on the table, not for decision, not even for discussion, but just, okay, at least you guys are thinking about that, is, uh, we hear from principals and teachers quite a bit where we, we don't have any alternative program for sixth graders. So, right now, with the rising seventh, we have some overage, underaccredited kids that we're able to serve, but this is a population that we're definitely trying to figure out what would be the best, uh, methodology and placement. So, I just wanted to get that on the table, it's something that we're all thinking about as a district, uh, and you'll probably hear more conversation from us to come back to the committee at some point with some recommendations, because that would be a policy shift, given we don't currently have programming.
Any comments on that? Question? Looking, looks okay, go ahead.
Okay.
It's okay, you got time, if you want to say it, go ahead.
No, I have no time, go ahead.
The, um, the only thing I would say on that is, that's exactly what you said, right now, we, our policy is seven to twelve, rising seventh, I think we call them, like the older kids.
Yeah.
So, we shouldn't have sixth graders in there until we decide. When we look at that data of the discipline and the younger is a higher, we're saying a lot of things are working good, we can't be everything to all people, we have to, so I for one would wanna have a presentation before that just gets done.
Yeah, we, we have a couple of different options that we've been kicking around, so we'll, we'll just come back to the committee at some point with some discussion on that.
All right, thank you very much, you're more than welcome to stay, everybody from RPA. If you wanna go, feel free, you'll be not be offended. And we're gonna move quickly over to the last agenda item, immediate and long-term strategy for SCL supports, tier one, alternative education strategy. I'll turn it over to Superintendent.
So, uh, we're here tonight as part of a, a larger, alternative, restorative methodology, looking at the district where we're gonna present to you tonight some, some stock facts about caseload and needs, and then present to you what we see as short-term need requests tonight, and then the beginning of what we consider a longer-term strategy, which will play itself out, at least the first part, in the FY twenty-one budget. So, I'm blessed that we have, uh, a great team in SCL. So I'm blessed that we have a great team in SEL. They proved themselves yesterday, once again, in dealing with crisis in our schools, and some of the best people we possibly have leading this work. So I'll turn it over to Ann, you introduce, and then we'll have those discussions.
As you know, you recently approved the hiring of an additional SAC over at CUS. At that time, we were asked to come back and look at some additional data. We've done that, and tonight Claudia Costa, our lead SAC, lead school adjustment counselor, is going to present and share some of her findings with you. So welcome, Claudia.
Thank you. Good evening. So I listed on that first page some of the school adjustment counselor responsibilities that we have in front of you, so I'll go right into the numbers. So for the high school, how I created it, I did it by grade level on that first draft there. How many active students are listed by conduct admin? So if you look at grade 12, grade 12, District 169 active students, there's one school adjustment counselor assigned to those 469 students. And just that one school adjustment counselor, she has 22 students that she is responsible for, asks for their IEP needs, whether it's on the A grade or C grade, where they have to either consult or provide direct service by the school adjustment counselor, for a total of nine hours and 30 minutes on a weekly basis that one school adjustment counselor has to provide to just that grade level alone. She's also responsible for six, 504s that have social-emotional needs on them. Just the grade level alone, if you're looking at ninth grade, by for data, so far to date, this data was run the first week of December, there had been nine crisis referrals just out of that class alone, students who were, there was concern for their safety and needed further evaluation for them, and I also listed 51As. So I've broken them down by grade level at the high school. Those numbers there, I wanted to highlight really is the number of hours each school adjustment counselor, and each school is, has commitment just on their IEPs on a weekly basis. So if you look at resiliency, I did the same thing, broken down for resiliency, looking at the number of students, active students, the number of SACs that are assigned to the school, the number of IEP caseloads that those SACs are responsible for at that school, and the total hours on a weekly basis, just assigned to that IEP commitment. So I've broken them all down, from the high school to RPA, the middle schools, our K through eight schools, as well as our elementary schools. So we have those numbers in front of you. And what I'd like to do is, was a proposal for this school year alone, was to see if we can add an addition, I know, I appreciate the additional SAC we just had that was given for our CUS, that's going to be, we're in the process of hiring, and that's going to be a huge support, that really we're looking to see as a proposal is potentially having another SAC for each of our other two middle schools. So that way, each grade would have a school adjustment counselor assigned to them to provide those levels of support that they need. So when we're looking at Talbot, turnaround school, 548 students, there's one SAC in that school right now, and one student coordinator. So it's high-level needs, so my request was to see if we can get an additional SAC at the other two middle schools. And then when I was looking, if I could, at Derby High School's data, in particular, the junior office, if you can look at that, so I'm going back a little bit, and I apologize, that one school adjustment counselor in the junior office, she's responsible for 545 students, 16.15 hours per week are on IEP commitments alone, which is a lot of hours.
A 30-hour week. More than half of her week is assigned to-
Per week.
Per week, correct. So if I could, propose an additional support for that school adjustment counselor. Right now, the freshman office, we have two school adjustment counselors. This year, we added two to the sophomore office, there was only one, so I'm really looking for the support of supporting that school adjustment counselor, the junior office, looking at these high-level numbers to support her to do the work.
Hold on. What did you mean 30-hour a week?
So if it's a six-hour student day, times five days a week, there's 30 working hours with students.
With the student in front of the school adjustment counselor.
But all that work is not with the student, I mean, some of that stuff is preparation, which is in their eight-hour workday.
Correct, but 16 hours of that time has to be-
Direct. But it's in a 40-hour week.
The student's only in front of her.
I know, but what I'm saying is, there's some paperwork and things that we've done where the student's not in front of her.
So she could do the, if there's a consultation part of it, that could be done, consultation with a parent or clinician after those hours, correct, but majority of it, the direct service is with the student in front of her.
That particular column, correct me if I'm wrong, but that particular column represents direct service to students by these people.
That's direct and consulting there.
That's not-
Yes, it's both, direct and consulting. The A grade is your consultation on an IEP, the C grade is direct services, pulling out a student needing one tool.
And somebody's here going to tell us that that's happening to every student across the district?
Those are the hours that the students are, have on their IEP.
I understand, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but is someone here at the table going to say that all of these requirements and hours that are in there are being checked by someone in special ed to make sure that they're being serviced at the current times?
Those are part of the IEPs, they have to be-
It's legal document.
Right, so it's written in them.
It's written in the IEPs, I can understand that. You can take the data, you can read it, and you can add a number.
Spot.
Reality, is that really happening? Is what I'm looking for, I mean, in reality, is that happening? And I think that's where we, as far as I'm concerned, before, we just keep on adding, and I'm one of the biggest proponents on this committee for additional supports, but we really need to look at, what are we doing with the increases that we've already had and conversions of positions during the year? We have other opportunities, so some of the things are happening now, but at the same time, it's just not a, there's more to it in some cases.
Right, all right. So we're delivering the services that we counted up in terms of IEP mandated services, those are being delivered. It's all we do. So there isn't, like, all the other stuff that happens with kids, social-emotional stuff, we're not able to get to because of the caseloads that we have. So there's huge caseloads, what we've identified, correct me if I'm wrong, two buildings that right now, or two buildings that we're concerned about right now-
And the high school.
And the high school. It's just a temporary Band-Aid to give them some additional supports half a year for the rest of the year. Next year, I'm going to bring forward a full, robust, in my budget proposal, request around SEL supports, once we have a further, what I'm trying to get to is a boilerplate. Each school gets X, but then you've got to look at percentages of turnaround and trauma and all those things, and maybe some of those schools get a Y as well, but we're not there yet to be able to do that. But we are here tonight to say, we've noticed a couple of schools that are having a real problem, and we need some help just to manage the-
The caseload.
Yeah, the caseload.
The caseload and the stuff that bubbles up.
Thank you.
Because we're reactionary right now, we're not really providing preventative or proactive services right now. They, the counselors in these schools are much more reactionary, and they're not able to meet everybody's needs at this point in time.
So the grade 11, because it's highlighted here, what do they do? Do they do lunch duty?
She does. Once a week.
That's crazy.
Once a week.
Once a week.
To, and I'm not criticizing you all, just being honest. If we're saying now we have data, can't do the job to meet the needs of the kids, and we haven't done another administrative decision to say, they're not going to do lunch duty, before you come to say we need-
We don't have the capacity not to do lunch duty with these people.
And come up with a different way.
So they're in the administrative union, they have administrative duties, just like teachers have administrative duties. So long-term solution, if we don't, if we want to make it a policy that our FRA counselors don't do lunch duty, we're going to need to invest in some other supports, because right now, I won't be able to run lunch the rest of the year.
But listen to what I'm saying, and what they just presented, was that they're not even meeting the needs of the IEPs that are here, and-
I didn't say that. I said that those are the hours that they're committed to on a weekly basis, so we're really requesting support to help them, not only to do reactive work, but proactive work in that grade level.
So have we moved anybody from the other? So if we're looking to equalize, and we have a school that has X amount, why not have the person who has more, if it just so happens that I happen to be the 12th grade or 11th grade person, I get the short end of the stick, and the other person, like, can we help to, he can help me with some of those, he can help me with some of those, or do we just say, oh, you're stuck in 11th, you've got to do it, even though you have lesser needs here? Doesn't it make sense to share the wealth?
So if you look at the numbers, right, the senior office is by herself as well too, delivering those hours right beside her. We just, this year alone, with a second SAC was added to the sophomore office because of our cohort model that we have to support our students, and that's really working really well as a support. But even that, that junior office SAC, there's many times that she doesn't go to that lunch duty, because she's doing other duties, and that's okay too, because they're understanding of that at the high school. It's just really looking not only at that number, but everything else that comes with being a SAC and servicing the students asked for their IEP needs.
Costa, Sue, so I understand this correctly, so 34 students in grade 11 are on IEPs, the total number of hour, well, I'm sorry, that are on that caseload for that SAC.
For that school.
For that grade level.
Correct.
That's what I meant. I mean, there's 128, if you add up all the numbers for all the grades. So for that grade level, it was 34.
Correct.
You take the total number of hours of service needed according to their IEPs, and you've divided that by 34, and that's where you're getting that 16.15 hours?
No. Every student's IEP is individualized in terms of what their need is on the-
Right. So you've taken a total number of hours for each of those students, and you've added and divided by how many students? How are you getting to that number? How are you getting the 16.15?
So I requested all of the SACs in the district, I created a Google Book for them and asked that they give me that data, and that was as per the last meeting, they wanted to know what all of our data looked like, so I, all the SACs counted up the students that they have to service, and the amount.
Right, so 34, let's just stick with grade 11. So 34.
Correct.
And how many hours did they come up with?
The 16 hours point 15.
That's the average.
No, that's the hours that are-
Well, that's each person.
30 minutes, 30 minutes per kid.
No, that's for those 34 students.
That's the total of the 34 students.
34 students would be-
Some might be 15 minutes, some might be an hour.
Correct. Some students might be 10 minutes, some might be 30, and that's where it is.
I got you. So in the course of a week, out of 34 students, cumulatively, 16.15 hours for all 34 students.
Correct, correct.
Okay. So I ask the questions, because if not, I'm looking at these numbers and it'll be anything to me if I don't know where they came from. So I got it now. One of the comments that was made, that because they're spending 16.15 hours on delivering services for IEPs, that sometimes they can't get to the other stuff. What happens when that transpires?
They call for support from one another in the building to help out in the way they can.
And then what ultimately happens? What ultimately happens? If, so, I'm in the grade 11, and I call my grade 10 counterpart, I call my grade 9 counterpart, and he says, wait a minute, or she says, I got 17.4 hours of services that I have to deliver too. I can't help you out. What happens?
At the-
What typically happens?
At the high school level, they all support each other, and they help each other because they know these numbers.
So none of the students go into crisis, none of the students need to be shipped out by EMS to the hospital, be evaluated, and we don't get an email saying, what happens?
We section some of the children. Some of the children unfortunately end up seeing perhaps a vice principal, and it becomes much more negative or punitive as opposed to dealing with mental health issues.
Right. So we don't service them, but as a result, they're not servicing them, trying to get to the root of what happens next. Do they just go back to baseline, they're okay, they go back to class, they eventually come back, they de-escalate themselves? What happens? You all see it every day.
Their guidance counselors fill in, as you said, yeah.
Right. Like, I'm trying to help you here, but if you're not going to make the argument to me that they're spending 16 hours on IEP services and they don't get to the other stuff, but the other stuff doesn't really trans, or doesn't bubble up to anything that we need to be concerned about, then, if you're telling me that because we don't get to those other things, they go into crisis, they're unserviced, whatever, they become further, conduct issues, you know, escalate because of it, nah, we're talking, now you're going to get my ear, now I'm going to say, okay, how do we balance those things from happening, we're giving you the support so they don't happen?
So that's-
But I don't hear any, I'm trying to get that.
My argument is that, because of the amount of time that they're spending on this, there's not, they're not being proactive, it's the reactive.
Okay.
Because they're getting to those crises as opposed to maybe waiting, helping the situations before they bubble out into a bigger situation, whether it's conflict-
Right, okay.
Whether it's mediation, they're not able to get to them at the root of it, they're getting it to when it's a full-blown crisis.
That's, that's the stuff that I think is missing in this discussion right now. I can see all the other stuff, but when you're telling me that they're committed to these hours, and as a result, some of the other stuff isn't going on, I need to hear more about what are those? Give me examples of what that looks like. Ask your SACs to outline for us, what does that mean? Because, and then you maybe have a better argument to make as to why additional supports may be needed. Right now, I'm hearing, yeah, they're tied up doing IEP stuff, and other people may help them out, but no one's made the case so far, at least for me, from my standpoint, well, what happens, like, is it crisis intervention? Are we paying for kids to leave our schools? Are we not servicing them? I'm like, what does that translate into? And if I get more of that, then I think I'd be able to digest it, well, what you're telling me, and balance whether or not I'd be supportive of additional, and I am supportive, and Mr. Agnew, and Mr. Coogan, the committee has been, we've given supportive services for SEL across the district historically, and I want to continue to do that, but I'm missing a piece of the narrative here. I'm getting some of it, but I need the other stuff. I yield.
Slow down. Explain to the members of the subcommittee why we're here tonight. What are we here to ask them for and why? Just have a talk with them.
Sure.
Just like you came to me the other day and we talked about this.
And looking at the two schools that we were, that I proposed to Dr. Malone, being the more in Talbot, the SACs there, and as well as at the high school, they're spending a lot of their time, first, this is their mandate that they have to fulfill, but the time that they, to build those connections with those students and do the preventative work, I think because they're doing the reactive work, that's being missed. So what I'd like to see is having less kids leaving our schools being sectioned, so that way, we're building more relation, we're having the time to build these relationships with these students. I'd love to see more of that. The other thing I'd love to show is how many fights were happening, right? And I have that data too, I can provide you that. And how much more maybe if the SACs were able to build and connect with these students through conversations, through their conflicts, through their flare-ups, that mediation could happen at a higher number to support the students, and to maybe problem-solve some of the issues that might be happening. That's what I'd be looking for.
And I think that's what's helpful information. So if this goes to the next level, I would ask that information be presented, because I think that's the piece for me that I'm looking for. What's not being accomplished as a result of what's mandated, what they're focusing on, and what are we missing? And as a result of us missing that, how many, because we get the emails when students get sectioned out of schools, we get the emails when there are fights, we get, so if that's a result of not being serviced, because we don't have the staff, because they're doing work with students with IEPs and other mandates, that's what I need, that's the piece that I need to hear personally.
And we have that data.
And so, that's great. And so, what I would say is this as well, and then I'll yield, and I'll be done until we have the conversation, I guess, at the next level. But if we were to approve, the committee were to approve additional supports for the high school in the form of another, another student adjustment counselor, how would that position be utilized? Is that going to be someone who solely deals with the flare-ups, and the others will continue to focus on their caseloads? You have one building SAC who sort of is in response mode to students who are struggling, they get referrals for conduct to intervene, mediation. What is that, what would that additional SAC do? Or are they just going to sort of compensate on all grade levels? And so I'd need to hear a little bit more about how that person's going to be utilized, and what their function would be, and how we were going to use that person, because if you're going to tell me, for one, again, I'm one person, you're going to tell me that person is just going to roll in and absorb the caseload of the mandates, we're going to go back to the same situation where we're not addressing the other issues, I'm not so I'm not so sure that's the best use of resources, but if you're going to tell me they're going to focus in on the ancillary stuff that they can't get to and we're going to cover that, now I may be, you know, inclined to, to be supportive of something like that. But thank you. I yield.
Coogan. You know what it is? This is a, and I regretfully, this is a snapshot of a class. Because when I was there, and I know there's more now, there's two guidance counselors that can step in. There was a Sam, I mean, I had a great Sam, our administrative assistant, Vicki. There was myself. I never let a kid go into crisis out in the office or not fill in with Tommy or somebody. We all pitched there. It was a team effect on these things. Those numbers, Claudia, they, 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 those are mandates for special ed, but there's much more to the job than that. And I believe that no kid is going to go to an office because someone's out doing their sixteen hours and be said, you know, see you later, go have a crisis, we'll get back to you after lunch duty or after this meeting. I think they bring them in, don't they?
They do, yes.
Okay. So I don't want people to think that they're so overworked that the kids aren't getting the help they need when they need it. Am I correct or am I wrong?
That is correct, but what we're looking for is to build these relationships with these kids and provide them the services and support, whether it's through referrals earlier on and, 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 and building that with the school adjustment counselor. That's what I was looking for.
Right, but I mean, what, those, those, those behavior, how many behaviors do you have in the freshman office?
Two.
Two, two. How many in the sophomore office?
I think there's one.
So you've got two there that I know are doing the kind of crisis work that Mr. Costa's talking about. If kids walk in and they're agitated and something's bugging them, those guys are grabbing them right away, aren't they?
Yes.
Yeah. So I, I'm pretty sure, I just don't want people to think that people are being neglected at the schools, any of them. I don't think that's what's happening. I think you're, you're talking about a better model is what you're talking about, Claudia. You're not talking about anybody getting shunted to the side or something. And I, I, I know that because I was there. It's not that way.
May I?
Yeah.
Mr. Coogan's right. I mean, they, they, they deal with things. I guess what hasn't been made clear to the committee is that in 2019, right now, we're seeing behaviors we've never seen before. And we're feeling overwhelmed. The numbers are high and the severity. And that's why you get so many, and I send you everything. You see how many, and I'll send you guys tomorrow a document that is just an example of just so far, how many fifty-one A's.
Well, that's, that's, see, that's a different case though.
Sectioned in crisis.
That's what should be told us, that what you're seeing now is accelerating off the charts with certain kids.
So what we're trying to get to, and, and I love Claudia and she's new in this role. What we're trying to get to is something great. We're not going to be there yet this year. So what we're looking at right now is how can we help the school sites that we've identified, the three, that we are feeling are drowning, not able to do, even just examples like lunchbox groups, those kinds of things. We pull kids and we do those things. If we had those three additional resources for this year, it's just helping us for this year. The long-term strategy is when we come back to you in a formal budget process, because we've identified SEL as a, a critical need and we know we're going to have, you know, I think a lot of, I mean, I think we all know, SEL is one of the things that the commissioners outlined, is that we're mandated now under the Student Opportunity Act that we have to fund and we have to show how that money is supporting that. So I think we're all on the same page. I think the request though to the committee for consideration is, would the committee, and I'm telling you the money's there, would the committee be willing to have a conversation with the full group of adding three positions which are only half the cost by the time they go in, that will just serve us for this year? You approve the final budget. Whether those positions are in it or not is up to you. That, that's not what I'm asking. Add capacity that stays forever. It's just how I develop next year's budget initially and then give it off to you guys to finalize.
So you, you expect us to believe that those three aren't going to be in the next year?
They'll definitely be there, but whether or not, but whether they're put in that, those buildings or somewhere else. I'm going to add, and I just, I want to be clear, I'm probably going to be bringing forward at least a request for probably ten SEL supports in next year's budget. Whether I do that through conversion or new positions. Now granted, last year, we got about $10 million and we had seventy-one new positions in the budget. Some through conversions, some through new positions. This year, we're looking at more than that. I, I, I think we're in a very good place on the classroom front. I think we're a very good place on the administrative front. The real need for us right now is how do we think about the SEL front and some of the other frontline supports?
So how do you structure three additional SAC positions and how do you advertise for those positions and draw people's attention to them when at the end of the year, they may be gone?
Great question. They may be gone in the capacity that they're in for right now, but as I just said, I know that I'm going to have at least ten that I bring forward that most likely, based on the model, when we show you the numbers, the committee will say, okay, this is a good investment of resources.
The problem is, without knowing where those dollars are coming in next budget specifically, that, that from, from where we sit, I think, may be an issue. I'm okay with you saying they may not be gone next year. They just may not be in the same location, job, you know, job location. But the reality is, if you're going to bring back and tell us specifically what positions you're going to look to convert to cover those? Or you're going to tell me exactly where the money?
I would come back with a specific.
For what positions you're going to eliminate in the district in order to pay for those next year?
I would show you, I would show you in, in a, in a budget. I would show you exactly where we would expend dollars from this year, that are dollars that would only be sustained moving forward.
You'll have, you'll have attrition, you'll have money in your salary, professional salaries. I'm not worrying about this year. I'm worrying about next year because when we add positions this year, it adds to next year's budget. Unless you can tell me next year what you're going to convert, what you're going to eliminate in order to keep those.
Yep.
You're just rolling three additional positions to next year. And from where I sit, that just grows the budget and I need to know where that funding is going to come from. And I know we're going to get the Student Opportunity Act money. I know that's coming. I'm okay with that. But I just need to know specifically where that's coming from so that I can be comfortable. If I take that vote, someone asks me, well, you added three positions, how are you going to pay for them next year? I'll have that answer.
Yep, and, you know, and I'm pretty good with the money, but I know you guys trust Kevin too. Very, so I'd have Kevin present that, get a real good sense and be able to answer, ask him questions and hear those responses as well. But I know that my team, in terms of where they are tonight in this process, they wanted to come here to this committee tonight to say, Houston, I've got a problem in three places that we're looking at your help. Would you be willing to consider further discussion about an investment of resources? And then we can get into, well, where can we do this from? How would it happen?
Motion to refer to full committee.
Second. Any other comments, questions? I have a couple. The, some of the data that's in here, I think, when we go to the full committee, I think needs to be expounded upon. One being those hours of commitment, what that means. So we talked about direct services or we talked about consult. We talked about when, what are the duties of a, a school adjustment counselor? And I know everybody's working hard, but we also hear from teachers that they work until five, six o'clock at night. Where is that happening across the board with these adjustment counselors, that they haven't to stay till four o'clock? Are they staying after hours from the principals directly to say what is really happening? And we can get more clarity. The other thing I'd like to see is the chart that superintendent has and we've been working off across the whole district. The guidance counselors, I looked at this, are lacking in this description. That's an important piece because a guidance counselor is just as qualified in some cases as the school adjustment counselor. What do the services mean when you say they have to have hours of commitment? Is that group? Is that in a classroom? Is it strictly pull-out? Is there more to it? Just so we can get a true picture. Because I think you were trying to make the point that we have needs. And I think the data, which I like the data and I do appreciate that, it kind of took the argument a little more astray than like the last time when we got the information from CUS said, we need it because this, that, there's kids in crisis, there's all this others. It was a little more clear. I do like the data, not criticizing it. I just would like to see guidance, school, support specialists, all the different options of people that are in supports. And I for one will speak for myself. Whether it's these positions or the next year's positions, until we clean up the school adjustment counselor, school support specialist, all these different confusing topic, titles into one. So we know if we're going to have a uniform system, it's got to be this. We, we've had in this district over the years has been, well, I want to create this position, call something else. Then we're trying to figure out what the heck are these positions? Do we need to have a clear line? A school has a social worker, a school adjustment counselor. We shouldn't have all this confusion. I'll get to you in one sec.
I, we agree with you. So I just want to be, want to comment on that.
Thank you. The other one is that when you're looking at the data that was presented, it's all over the place on special ed and IEP mandates for the time. That shouldn't be that. I know it's different kids in different schools. But we shouldn't have, just like I've criticized in the past, some schools have zero suspensions for the whole seven hundred and fifty kids. I don't believe those numbers. But in some cases, we have charts here that say some school only has two mandated hours for their SAC and other pieces have thirty. But, you know, it doesn't, it, it doesn't all match up, so it, it leads to more questions from my end. But I will support moving this forward because I do think that we are going to hire more of these next year. My last point would be is we shouldn't be hiring these positions temporary for six months. Because we know, I think when you get hired as a school adjustment counselor, you get hired not necessarily for the school. You get hired as the district.
For the district, yeah.
So anybody that's at this table or anywhere else that doesn't think we're going to hire at least three more next year is, something's wrong.
I said ten.
But I'm just saying at least three. So let's say you advertise these next week. If I'm applying for a job and you say it's until June, I'm not going to apply it because it's not certain. So if we're going to take the step and say, we're going to recommend this for the need, at least three, then let's do it so it's a full job, it's a real job, it's going to be, as long as the person's meeting the goals and all the other stuff. We shouldn't do it temporary would be just my last point. I do appreciate the info. I would ask superintendent to give us some of the data that we have. Some of this stuff was really good to the full committee.
Yes.
The conducts and the suspensions, out-of-school suspensions, all that stuff was good information. I would that I yield.
Final comments?
Final comment.
One, you'll have by Friday in the Friday email, the matrix by school with the administrative positions and support positions by name. So you'll be able to see that. We just, we're almost done with it. So you'll have that updated as of this week. Two, we agree with you on titles. Created, it, no one's fault, but over the years, we've created all these different positions. Deans, department heads, adjustment counselors, clinical coordinator, whatever. But they're all the same. It's just a different name of a different thing, right? We're in a position that we're thinking big, like long-term, that we're, we're going to phase out many of those positions and just go with in many of them, just, you know, the monolithic role title that everyone knows and understands. So it just makes sense because I, I understand how folks are confused. What is the difference between adjustment counselor and a student support coordinator? One actually gets paid more than the other, but they do the same thing. And, and we have to be very clear about that. So we can phase out things over time and just never hire certain kinds of positions again and just go with a model that makes sense to the committee moving forward. Something we've been looking at. You'll probably hear more, you'll definitely hear more about this in the budget presentation.
And you can also eliminate those positions.
We can eliminate, I mean, the committee can eliminate, yeah.
Costa, have you?
No, and I agree with you. This, we're going to obviously hire additional people next year. I just for one want to know how we're going to fund that. That's all. And if you're going to do it through conversions, tell us where you're going to convert. If you don't know, you're going to just bill the budget or your request is going to be, that it's going to be X amount of dollars more than it was this year? Just tell us that so that, you know, while we're making these decisions, we know. Because ultimately, next year's budget, if it is going to grow, we need to know that. The city's going to need to know that. But I agree, oh, well, to think that we're not going to hire additional positions next year. Of course, it's not, of course, we're going to, we have needs, but I, I'm, I'm looking for, are you going to tell me your budget's going to grow by X amount of thousands of dollars because of these positions? Or are you going to tell me that you have this much going forward in salaries, but we're going to mitigate that by doing some conversions? So we're going to eliminate some positions that we realize over the course of this year, we may not need? I, I just, I'd like that information.
Understood.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan? Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, voted out.